Well, good evening. Before proceeding, I pay my respects to the Wurundjeri people as the traditional and original custodians of the lands on which we meet, and I acknowledge the continuing connection of the Tasmanian Aboriginal people to the skies, the land and the waterways. I pay respect to elders, past and present. Ladies and gentlemen, councillors, please be seated. Well, good evening. I extend a warm welcome to all those present here this evening and thank you for your attendance at this hour, Annual General Meeting of 2025. I invite those present to pause for a moment of quiet reflection and respect before commencing tonight's annual general meeting and council meeting. Thank you, councillors. This meeting is being broadcast live on YouTube, and what is said in this meeting is not protected by privilege. There is a link to the agenda papers on council's website. Item number three, introduction of councillors. Beside me, the Deputy Mayor, councillor Alison Ritchie, councillor Tony Mulder, councillor Bree Hunter, councillor Daniel Hume, councillor Richard James, councillor James Walker, councillor Emma Goyn, councillor Jay Darko, councillor Beth Warren, councillor Heather Chong and councillor Wendy Kennedy. I'd also acknowledge that the CEO, Mr Ian Nelson, is here tonight with members of his executive team. So, we have a full house, there are no apologies from councillors. Item number five, the meeting procedures, they've been circulated and they are included with the agenda, on the back of the agenda for those here in the gallery, and for those watching at home, they're available on the website. Item number six, which is confirmation of the minutes of the 2024 Annual General Meeting. The recommendation is that the minutes of the 2024 Annual General Meeting as circulated be taken as read and confirmed. May I have a mover for that, please? Thank you councillor Warren, second and councillor Chong. I'll put the motion, all those in favour. And that's unanimous, thank you very much colleagues. Moving now on to item number seven, which is the annual report. I'll present a report, I'll then invite the CEO to present a report and then the CFO as well. But each year, the City of Clarence produces our annual report to reflect on what we have achieved together as a community and to outline the priorities that will shape our future. It is important to be transparent and accountable to our residents while celebrating the projects, programmes and partnerships that make Clarence such a special place to live. This year has been marked by both progress and purpose. Alongside our day-to-day work maintaining and improving essential infrastructure, we have continued to address the bigger issues that matter most to our community. Our investment in infrastructure has delivered tangible outcomes across our municipality, including the completion of major stormwater works in Belarive, resealing Begonia Street in Lindisfarne, safety improvements to the Malana Road roundabout and major upgrades to the Clarendon Vale Oval Pavilion. Financially, we've set a sound and responsible forward-thinking budget that puts people first. Clarence accounts for more than 10% of Tasmania's population and remains one of the fastest-growing regions in our state. The 2025-26 budget strikes the right balance between keeping rates as low as possible and ensuring we have the infrastructure, the services and planning needed to support our future. Alongside these highlights, we finalized significant strategies to guide our city's future, including our 10-year cycling strategy, our bushfire mitigation strategy and natural area strategy. We also completed our first reconciliation action plan, reflecting our ongoing commitment to reconciliation and truth-telling. Now, this plan is more than a document, it is a pledge to listen, to learn and act in partnership with Tasmanian Aboriginal people. It reinforces our dedication to creating a workplace and a community where everyone feels respected, valued and included, and where diverse voices and perspective shape the way we move forward together. We have strengthened partnerships with government and engagement with our community to champion major projects that will drive Clarence's growth in a sustainable, vibrant and inclusive way. These include reaching the final phase of the Clarence City Heart Plan, which received overwhelming community support to revitalise our civic centre; the Cambridge Oval Master Plan, developed in partnership with the Department of Education, Children and Young People; and the $60 million Bayview Secondary College Sports Precinct Project, a regional sports and education hub that will serve generations to come. I am proud to say that Clarence has led the way with innovative sustainability programmes this year. We launched Southern Tasmania's first council-run soft plastics recycling initiative, which has already diverted more than 5.8 tonnes of plastic from landfill. Our pilot amnesty, tyre amnesty programme also set a new benchmark in tackling illegal dumping and keeping waste out of the environment. We continue to advocate strongly on behalf of our residents to the Tasmanian and federal governments on key priorities, including upgrades to the Mornington Roundabout, addressing the shortage of community multi-sport facilities, upgrading the Belarive Ferry Terminal and securing a replacement Tasman Bridge. And we've also sought to give our community a strong voice in shaping tomorrow. This year, we conducted 25 community engagements on key projects, including the Druithy Peninsula Structure Plan, the Clarence City Heart Plan, the Dewant River Ferry Expansion, our Open Space Strategy and the Little Howard Beach Master Plan. Our municipality came alive this year through our extensive and popular events calendar. From our 29th Annual Clarence Jazz Festival, our biggest yet, to collaboration with 10 Days on the Island and Dark Mofo, our city has staked its claim as a cultural hub for music and art. Our own events, such as the Mental Health Week Community Walk and the Youth Homelessness Event Off the Couch at Rossiescape Park, have strengthened our community identity and our cultural life. One area of focus has been responding to the rise in racism across the state and Australia. Clarence joined other local governments in the 'We Stand Together Against Racism' initiative, affirming that Clarence is a welcoming city for all. We've also championed initiatives that encourage kindness and respect, supporting the local government association's Lift the Tone campaign, recognising that how we treat one another is at the heart of a healthy community. Together, these achievements reflect a city that is growing with purpose, investing in infrastructure, embracing sustainability, supporting culture and leading with kindness. I am proud of what we and the entire organisation has achieved this year, and I look forward to continuing to work alongside you all to ensure Clarence remains a connected, resilient and thriving community. I would like to thank our CEO, Ian Nelson, and his team for their dedication in delivering a high level of professionalism advice, sorry, professional advice and support to council and the City of Clarence. And finally, I'd like to thank my fellow councillors for another year of dedication, hard work and commitment to our community. And that's my report. I'll now call on the CEO to provide his report, please. Thank you, Mr Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to take you through some of the highlights from council's 2024-25 Annual Report, which showcases the breadth of work delivered by the City of Clarence over the past year. Clarence is a rapidly growing and dynamic city, and with that growth comes both challenges and opportunities. This year's annual report highlights the scale of our operations, the projects we've delivered and the planning we've undertaken to ensure Clarence continues to thrive into the future. Our financial position remains strong, this year recording an underlying surplus of $8.8 million. We've managed our finances carefully to minimise the impact on residents while maintaining service levels and delivering important projects. A key milestone was the strategic purchase of property on Gordon's Hill Road in Rossney for $23.5 million. This investment supports our long-term vision for a new community and civic hub under the Clarence City Heart Plan. It contributes to revitalising our city centre, supporting jobs, economic growth and expanded services. We remain focused on keeping rates fair and manageable while continuing to invest in Clarence's future. The average increase of 6.48% was a difficult but necessary decision driven by inflation and the rising costs of delivering essential services our community relies on. Through our $21.6 million Capital Works Programme, we invested in projects that improve safety, functionality and livability across Clarence. This included major stormwater upgrades at Beach Street Belarive to improve flood resilience as well as a significant roadworks across Mornington, Richmond, Lindisfarne and other areas. $2.67 million was also spent on footpath accessibility and renewals. We expanded our tracks and trails network, upgraded facilities at Opossum Bay and launched Tasmania's first seniors exercise park. We also commenced construction of the Cambridge Dock Park and replacement of the Clarendon Vale Oval Pavilion with new oval lights. These works demonstrate our commitment to maintaining and improving the infrastructure that underpins daily life in our community. Beyond infrastructure, we focused on projects that enhance wellbeing and quality of life. Through our community grants programme, we provided more than $165,000 to individuals, groups and programmes that contribute to Clarence vibrancy. The City Heart Plan reached its final community consultation phase with strong support. The Cambridge Oval Master Plan continues to advance and we're progressing transformative projects including the Bayview Secondary College Sports Precinct and the Druithy Peninsula Structure Plan. At the same time, we've commenced future-focused projects such as the Community and Civic Hub in Rossney and undertook feasibility work for the Bayview Secondary Sports Precinct. Internally, we've improved how we deliver services through the rollout of our customer experience strategy, adoption of a new customer service charter and redevelopment of our website to support a digital-first approach. We've also refreshed our brand to reflect a modern, forward-looking city. Our city planning team processed 725 development applications, which is a clear reflection of Clarence's growth. This year has been one of delivery, investment and forward planning. We've built our strong financial position, invested in community assets and essential infrastructure and positioned Clarence to take advantage of future opportunities. I'm very proud of the dedicated and professionalism of our staff, whose hard work ensures we meet the needs of our growing community while keeping a clear focus on the future. I'd also like to thank councillors for their leadership and decision-making during the past year. Thank you.
Thank you, Sir Joe. I'd now like to call upon our Chief Financial Officer, Ms Marwale, to present her report, please.
Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to present council's 24-25 financial statements this evening. Firstly, in accordance with the Local Government Act, the annual accounts were lodged within the 45-day statutory deadline. Council again used the Local Government Division's financial statement template and the audit was undertaken by Audit Tasmania and the Assistant Audit General has issued an unqualified audit report and done so within their key performance timeframe. I'd like to thank the team at Audit Tasmania for their efforts in relation to this year's engagement and the resulting audit opinion, as well as council officers for once again going well beyond to ensure the annual accounts were completed on time and to a very high standard. In relation to the 24-25 financial statements, I'd like to highlight a few key areas. Firstly, council's positive financial result. The underlying surplus is a key financial management indicator, which for the financial year was $8.75 million. This measure shows council's estimated operational result from own sourced funds. That is, it does not include any capital grants, contribution of capital assets or operating grants that were not expended in the year the revenue was received. Delivering an underlying surplus consistent with long-term financial planning supports the delivery of council's strategic goals, which allows council to invest in projects that seek to deliver benefits to the community. It also allows council to minimise rate shock to the Clarence community. I would also like to draw your attention to the total comprehensive result of council for 24-25 being a profit of $66 million. This is inclusive of many accounting-related and non-cash items, including a revaluation increase to the value of council assets in the amount of $36.6 million. Such an increase while providing for a strong financial result and growth in the value of council also indicates an increase to the future replacement cost of council's infrastructure, along with additional maintenance and renewal expenditure required on an annual basis to maintain the service level of infrastructure. It is therefore essential council continues to consider and provide long-term asset funding from the annual results. Other significant accounting-related and non-cash items included in the profit are contributed capital assets of $15.3 million, an increase to the value of council's investment in Taz Water of $3.5 million and an increase to the value of council's investment in Copping Refuse Disposal Site Joint Authority and other associates of $3.7 million. In the past five years, council receives contributed assets, mostly from subdivisions, of approximately $91.7 million. This ongoing growth in the city also places asset renewal burden on infrastructure that must be funded in a responsible and sustainable manner into the future. However, this can be achieved by ensuring that council's renewable effort is adequately funded by cash-backed reserves, such as the Asset Renewal Reserve, which is listed June 25, has grown to $39 million. As council is part-owner of Taz Water, this too impacts our financial statements in two ways. Firstly, in the financial year, Taz Water revalued its water and sewer assets, which resulted in an increase of council share in Taz Water by $3.5 million to $184 million. And secondly, Taz Water paid dividends of $2.6 million in the financial year, which is in alignment with Taz Water projections. This included a $442,000 dividend, which Taz Water plans to pay each year for five years to replace dividends that withheld during the height of COVID. The last payment for this special dividend is expected to be in this current financial year. Council's cash balances are also worth highlighting with council. Cash balances saw a decrease of $10.6 million from the prior year. The decrease in cash held was largely due to the purchase of 30 Gordon's Hill Road in June, along with completing or substantially completing some of the major prior-year Capital Works Programme, such as the Beach Street Stormwater Project and Backhouse Lane upgrades. We had $48 million of capital project funds carried over from 24-25 into the current financial year. In summary, cash and investments at Thursday, June 25 were $81.5 million. We classify $60 million as restricted. This includes cash for grants, staff leave provisions, as well as reserves such as the Asset Renewal Reserve, $39 million, Public Open Space Reserve, $3.8 million and Car Parking Reserve, $2.7 million. The remaining $21.5 million we classify as unrestricted, as cash supports working capital carried forward into 25-26. The strong cash balance is the direct result of a long-term financial management strategy first implemented 25-plus years ago. Almost $40 million was expended in cash on the delivery of capital projects in 24-25, inclusive of the purchase of 30 Gordon's Hill Road. The Infrastructure and Natural Assets Group must be commended for continuing to deliver completed municipal assets for community use and enjoyment. Within the Statement of Financial Position, there is $28.6 million in capital works in progress, and as projects are completed, the amount will be transferred from work-in-progress to the relevant asset class. Work-in-progress has decreased by $1.5 million from the prior year, demonstrating a focus to finalise and place into service the high-quality, new, improved or renewed assets for community use. I would also like to provide an update on council's loan balances. During 23-24, council approved funding for Pass Road of $5.1 million. A substantial amount of works has not yet been undertaken, these loan funds will not be taken up until the project is complete. During 24-25, council did draw down $4 million of approved borrowings, an additional $3 million for the Beach Street Stormwater Project, which was finalised during the year, and $1 million as approved in the 23-24 budget to begin a needs analysis and concept plans for future council chambers and civic centre. In April 2025, council approved loan funding for the purchase of 30 Gordon's Hill Road. While these funds were not drawn down at the time of purchase, instead using cash holdings at that time, loan funds will be accessed at a future time to support these intergenerational assets. Council did repay over $3 million of prior-year borrowings, which was largely related to the $14.8 million loan that council was awarded as part of the Local Government Loan Programme to assist local government with continued infrastructure investment during COVID times. This line was fully repaid in December 24. I would also like to highlight the following points that may impact council going forward. Although having been more stable in recent times, inflation will continue to have a significant impact on future budgets. Although a significant amount of capital works was undertaken in 24-25, we still have an approved capital programme of $75 million, up $12 million from 23-24, which continues to stretch our current staff. Interest rates continue to be topical and recent indicators suggest near-future reductions are unlikely. Interest rate movement will therefore impact on our decision on when we will consider taking up loans mentioned earlier. Council needs to ensure that the cycle of asset revaluation occurs within the requirements of Australian accounting standards. Stormwater assets were subject to a full revaluation in 24-25, with land, buildings, parks and recreation and waste management assets will be fully revalued in 25-26. And finally, as councillors are aware, the 10-year strategic asset management plan of council and underlying asset management plans are continually under review. Any changes to the focus or timing of asset renewal or new asset construction may have a material impact on the long-term financial management plan of council. Both the asset and financial management plans will be considered throughout the coming 25-26 budget process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms Marwale. We move now on to item 7D of our agenda. No submissions have been received, so there's no need to discuss those submissions. We now move to 7F, which is a motion to adopt the annual report. Before I put that motion though, I will invite questions from councillors regarding the annual report or the presentations. Are there any questions from councillors? Councillor James, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. My question, two of which are to the Chief Financial Officer. On page 66 of the annual report, under Buildings, it shows fair value at the 30th of June 25, $75 million. At 2024, $50.5 million, less accumulated depreciation of $8 and $7 million respectively. So, my question is, that increase from $50 to $75, is that the purchase of 30 Gordon's Hill Road? And if so, is there any accumulated depreciation in the 2025 amount which is shown on page 66?
Thank you, councillor James. Ms Marwale, please.
Some of that would be, and mainly, the purchase of 30 Gordon's Hill Road, and that was purchased, I think, very late, at the end of June, so there'd be very little accumulated depreciation in there.
Thank you, Ms Marwale. Councillor James?
Excuse me. You mentioned there was $66 million in profit for the year ending 2025, of which $34 is part of the revaluation. So, there is another $32 million. So, can you just explain the source of that?
Thank you, councillor James. Ms Marwale, please.
Through you, Mayor. Yes, there's $36 million from the revaluation of the stormwater assets. We also would have contributions, I think I mentioned, of $15 million to do with contributed assets, and the revaluation of Taz Water would also be in there and some other small items.
Thank you, councillor James. Are there any other questions from councillors? Councillor Mulder?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. My just question relates to the cash balance...
Thank you, Mr Mayor. My just question relates to the cash balance, which we've just been advised has decreased by ten million dollars over the last financial year. So what is the balance now in 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 real terms? And what is the balance projected to be under our ten year financial strategy?
Thank you councillor Mulder. Miss Merrill.
Through you, mayor. Do you, when you say now, do you mean as of today or do you mean Thursday, June? Sorry. Sorry. Um, I think I'd stated in there it was sixty eighty one point five million at Thursday, June, and I'd have to take the second part of the unnoticed with the projection for the end of this financial year.
Thank you, Miss Merrill. councillor Mulder, any other questions?
Um, it's not a question, but I do believe there was that the ten year financial strategy report actually has that number in it.
Well, thank you councillor Mulder. Any other questions from colleagues? councillor Walker.
Thank you, and possibly again through to Miss Merrill. Page seventy one discusses the defined benefit plan contingencies. Well, discusses the the fact that there are still active employees under the defined benefit plan. I guess I'm trying to understand from this where we're going with that. Are our liabilities, are our liabilities increasing each year or are we starting the tail down in this area?
Thank you councillor Walker. Miss Merrill.
Mayor, that would be one I'd have to take on notice to know the details of which staff are still involved in that benefit scheme.
Thank you. So, do you have anything to add to that?
Yes, I can add something to that. We received some advice a few weeks ago that there's no additional contributions required from council in respect to defined benefit because the fund has sufficient funds to generate the the income it needs. So hopefully that provides an answer.
councillor Walker.
Thank you for that. I assume that depending on how the investment class and those things go, we still could be asked to make a call if things potentially go south.
So, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you councillor Walker. Yes, that's correct. But for now several years, there hasn't been a call. We do get updates each year post thirty June.
There any other questions from councillors? Right, there being none, I'll put the motion, which is that the two thousand twenty four twenty five annual report be dropped. I'll call for a mover, please. councillor Kennedy, thank you. Deputy Mayor, second, thank you. I'll put that motion, all those in favour. Nationality, thank you very much, colleagues. Moving now on to item eight, which is reports of activities and achievements of council committees and authorities. Would any councillor like to provide an overview of their committee in this forum? Not compulsory, but are you making a move there councillor Mulder? There we go. Usually it's like that, but if you go, thank you councillor Mulder.
Great introduction.
councillor Mulder, you have the call. Thank you.
As a member of the Australian Coastal Councils Association, which is a body that lobbies state and federal governments, it has been a very interesting year in terms of the impacts of issues affecting local councils. We mainly meet by by teleconference about once a month and we discuss a number of issues. And they have an annual conference, which in the interests of saying the rate pays a few money, a few dollars, I did not attend, but I understand the mayor was approached at a at a similar function. Now, the work of the Australian Climate Council is very, very important in the sense that it takes a pragmatic approach of lobbying, particularly the federal governments on issues affecting state councils. And that's that's the area where the research has been done. And it also goes on issues like Airbnb and short term accommodation, which affects coastal councils very much greater than it does even metropolitan areas where it gets sold up. But one of the greatest things, I think, is that the move from the local government area throughout Australia is not so much about reducing emissions, but now starting to firm up to the fact that, given global players aren't coming up to the mark in terms of reducing emissions, we're going to have to understand that climate change, the impacts of climate change on coastal communities is going to actually happen. And now is the time, and this is where the councils have been moving, the association's been moving, is towards starting to now talk about about mitigating the impacts of climate change, including stormwater, including rainfall events, and more more about finding places where we can start to defend the coastline against the inevitable rise in oceans. So I think that's a major issue. And the thing that disappoints me is that of all the coastal areas, and we look at issues like the the algal blooms that are affecting the salmon industry, that are plaguing South Australia's entire fishing industry at the moment. These are issues that are, need to be addressed at a global, at a Australian wide level, not only a global level. But the fact is that I'm very disappointed that of all the council councils in Tasmania that are going to be infected by all this, only Clarence is a member of the Australian Councils Association. And and my real call is to say, we need to get into this together. And and my, you know, and the thing that comes to me is that we need to get other councils in Tasmania to understand the important work. This isn't just about emissions, about, you know, reducing emissions to mitigate against the impacts of climate change. It's actually about realising that climate change is going to happen, that coastal issues are going to occur, and we need to now start getting into the money of mitigating them rather than trying to reduce emissions on their own.
Thank you councillor Mulder. Any other colleague wishing to speak to their committee? councillor James, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I have, the Tracks and Trails Working Group has discussed, and it has been, the minutes have been forwarded to the Active Living Committee. And it's twenty years to the day that Tracks and Trails was initiated in Clarence. I have raised it with the CFO, CEO, sorry. And so my question is, is there going to be any celebration in relation to twenty years of really great work that the Tracks and Trails, under the assistance of the Clarence City Council, is going to celebrate this year?
Thank you councillor James. So, yeah. Thank you for the question.
Through you, mayor. I haven't had an opportunity to give that consideration, but I'll I'll take it on notice and and let you know what we plan.
Thank you councillor James. That point well made. councillor Kennedy.
Thank you, mayor. And I wasn't going to speak to this, but councillor James has just prompted me, I suppose, with the cultural creative and advisory committee, which has overseen some amazing events throughout the year, and there's so much more to look forward to next year. And I guess thirty years of the Jazz Festival is what we have to look forward to. So I'd just like to take the opportunity to thank my colleagues, councillor Chong, councillor Warren, the wonderful community members that give up their time as volunteers to assist us, and of course, our amazing creative team. So thank you.
Thank you councillor Kennedy. councillor Hume.
Thank you, mayor. Just commenting briefly about the Citizens Disability Access and Inclusion Working Group. We held our end of year celebration and thank you for attending and speaking at that. It was great to hear from the inaugural disability commissioner at that event. And we've been involved in a number of different issues. We've had input into the coastal access strategy. We've been working on with the Tracks and Trails Committee, you know, the project around accessibility of tracks and trails. We've also had members providing feedback into various projects and looking at issues. The the committee is also, you know, starting to to think about issues of when it comes to disability inclusion and when it comes to accessibility, not just mobility, but also the issues and challenges faced by people with psychosocial disabilities, you know, neurodivergent people, which is something that's really important to me as as the parent and care of a neurodivergent child. So, yeah, a lot lot going on in that space. And it's great to see Clarence becoming a much more accessible and inclusive city when it comes to the needs of people with disability.
Thank you councillor Hume. Any other colleagues wishing? councillor Hunter.
Yes, I do. As Chair of the Sustainability Advisory Committee, the last year has, it kicked off in full full force trying to get some traction on the Sustainability Action Plan. And we had some great momentum. Things have slowed in the last few months, but looking forward to finalising that in two thousand twenty six because the term, our council term is actually finished next year, so it'd be good to have that finalised. Also, as the Chair of the Bicycle Advisory Committee, we've reviewed some of the projects and proposals from the state government, as well as proposed projects from council perspective. We've had some group rides to look at some of the existing infrastructure around our city and made suggestions on what could be done moving forward, and that's been really enjoyable and looking forward to two thousand twenty six.
Thank you councillor Hunter. Any other colleagues? councillor Chong.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. councillor Warren and I both sit on the audit panel, which obviously considers a whole range of audit issues, but also strategic risk. And I particularly want to just mention our outgoing Chair, Richard Easter, who's just finished his term, eight years on the on the panel as an independent member and as Chair, and to recognise the work that he's done over that time.
Thank you councillor Chong. Any other colleagues wishing to talk to our committee? Well, thank you, colleagues. I may take this opportunity just to thank each and every one of you for your contributions at a committee level and working group level. It's greatly appreciated by the organisation, but most importantly by our community. So, and of course, acknowledge those community members who give of their time very freely as well to make a very positive contribution. Moving now on to item nine, there are no motions on notice, so nor are there any questions on notice. Question, item eleven, questions without notice. Are there any questions this evening from the public gallery? Don't hold back. You're very welcome to. Nothing from the public gallery. Well, thank you very much. Well, colleagues, that being the case, I'd like to thank those members of the public who attended in person this evening, those also joined us via the live stream. I'll now close this meeting and momentarily we're moving to our ordinary council meeting. So this meeting is now closed. Thank you. I'll now call the Clarence City Council meeting of Monday, the first of December two thousand twenty five to order. This meeting is being broadcast live on YouTube, but what is said in this meeting is not protected by privilege. And there is a link to the agenda papers on council's website. Item two, apologies, there are none. Item three, declarations of interest of councils or close associates. Are there any declarations to make? There being none, we now move on to a procedural motion to introduce an urgent item. So we'll do this before we deal with the omnibus items. I intend to introduce a procedural motion to deal with an urgent item in closed meeting. This, as you were briefed on Friday, requires an absolute majority decision. And the motion, as circulated by the CEO, reads, A, that pursuant to the provisions of Regulation ten of the Local Government Meeting Procedures Regulations two thousand twenty five, the council gives leave of the meeting to consider an urgent item regarding a contractual matter. B, that pursuant to the provision of Regulation seventeen of the Local Government Meeting Procedures Regulations two thousand twenty five, this item be considered in closed meeting as a matter to be dealt with deals with a matter related to contracts and tenders for the supply of goods and services and their terms, conditions, approval and renewal. This being a procedural motion, there is no debate, but I will call for a mover, please. councillor Chong, second, and councillor Hume, thank you. I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Nationality, thank you very much, colleagues. All right, now we head into our omnibus items. Item four point one, confirmation of the minutes. The minutes of the council meeting held on the tenth of November two thousand twenty five have been circulated. Are there any issues arising? Four point two, mayor's communications. Four point two point one, the mayor's diary, and that's been circulated, was circulated Thursday of last week. From eleventh of November to today, the first of December two thousand twenty five, lists my my events, but also those of the deputy mayor and councillor Chong who've represented me, and I thank them both, as I always do, for their work in that regard. Four point two point two is a letter from the Department of State Growth Planning Office. And I'd like to table this letter dated the twenty fourth of November two thousand twenty five from the Acting Director regarding the Proposed Housing Land Supply Rurane Order, applying to one fifty five Cambridge Road Rurane, Road Rurane. Thank you very much. Close. The next one is a letter from the Bell Reef Community Arts Centre. There's no question, no, there's no questions here councillor Mulder. Sit down, please. That's right, it is. Yep, thank you. Yeah, all right. Moving on. Four point two point three, letter from the Bell Reef Community Arts Centre. As colleagues would be aware, the Bell Reef Community Arts Centre celebrated its fiftieth year this year, and I'm delighted to have received the following letter from Mrs Lyn Beck on behalf of the centre. And Miss Beck writes, earlier this year, an artist at BCAC noticed an inscription on a stained glass window at the centre, a ten year tribute in nineteen eighty five to the establishment of the much needed Community Arts Centre after the collapse of the Tasman Bridge in January nineteen seventy five. This is our fiftieth year. As the colonial building has had a checkered history, it was decided to apply to the Australian Institute of Architects to be part of their open house to kick off our celebrations in November. This letter is to pass on our thanks for the way that the unique eighteen forty two building, with its holding cells and various uses, is well maintained and to thank staff who promptly respond to requests when asked. Firstly, we are very fortunate to have councillor Wendy Kennedy as an ex officio committee member. Her dynamic response to challenges and her creative input has had significant impact and connected us to council. For a number of years, we've had a close connection with Rosney Farm Arts. Tracy Coburn, Sarah Bishop, Alu Conboy have granted us three major schoolhouse exhibitions in the last ten years. I understand that councillor Kennedy is the first councillor to exhibit at the schoolhouse. During this special month, we have been honoured for the offer of the Mobile Container Gallery placed on the Bell Reef Boardwalk. It has had a considerable impact on the passing public and shown eastern shore residents the diversity of artwork that has been created by Bell Reef members. We've been delighted to welcome busy councillors to our last exhibition and thank mayor Blomley, deputy mayor Ritchie and councillor Chong, and possibly others as well. Council staff have shown understanding and a speedy response to please for help with building maintenance over the years. Two years ago, I claim Greg Boucher was faster than Superman in his response. While Greg was on leave recently, Brendan Drury has challenged that reputation. A torn fascia board fixed the same day. A blocked toilet in the weekend repaired by the plumber at nine thirty AM on a cold, wet Monday. He also arranged work on a broken pathway to be used by open house visitors and shore the safety visitors when fencing near a colonial listed wall that had given way after a major rain event. The holding cells and original steps have been discreetly repaired when needed. Stacey Harris is a pleasure to work with when organising annual lease details. In recognition of the fifty years of community arts connection, BCAC applied for a small cultural grant to fund an artwork for the garden, an activity in which all members will be invited to participate. We gratefully accept the funding and look forward to an opening in May two thousand twenty six. Please accept our thanks on behalf of the committee and members at Bell Reef Community Arts. Signed, Lyn Beck Secretary. I thank Mrs Beck very much for taking the time to write. And councillor Kennedy, is there anything you'd like to add?
A letter to receive. I'd just like to thank once again the Bell Reef Community Arts Centre because when you think about fifty years of the amount of people through a volunteer organisation that they have kept connected through some obviously very difficult times for this city. You know, volunteers keeping people connected and through artistic pursuits in the amount of workshops that have taken thousands of people through those doors. It's just an incredible feat and may they continue for many more, another fifty plus. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Kennedy. I'm also pleased to share that early today, in this very chamber, one hundred grade three, four students from Bell Reef Primary School visited our chambers as part of their studies of local government. The students were divided into four groups. They weren't all in here at the same time. And with councillor Chong's assistance, we held council meetings that the children enthusiastically participated in. And I must warn colleagues, considering the high calibre of their questions and contributions, will have some real talent coming through in about ten years' time. But the students also explored local bird and plant life with help from our environment team and learned about recycling and waste practices with the Waste and Sustainability Team. And I'd like to take this opportunity to particularly thank the teachers of Bell Reef Primary School. And I'd like to take this opportunity to particularly thank the teachers of Bellariff Primary School and Miss Anna Smith of Miss Wickes's team for her superb management of all the activities. And also councillor Chong for her excellent overview of council's kindness campaign. So thank you all very much. As councillor Chong referred to in our earlier meeting, following eight years of service as a member of council's audit panel, the last two years as chair, Mr Richard Easter has served the maximum tenure and in line with the rules, he's retired. So on behalf of council, I would like to extend our appreciation to Mr Easter for his service. And the CEO and I recently wrote to him on behalf of council, expressing that sentiment. Moving on to 4.3, council workshops, as listed in the agenda. 4.4, tabling a petition. CEO, are there any petitions?
Thank you, Mayor. We received one petition last week and the petition relates—the subject is opposing the rezoning of 113, 115, 118 and 119 East Irwin Highway from residential to local business. As advised to councillors in the agenda briefing, we have spoken with the petitioner and that petition will now be provided as a—as part of the planning item that it relates to. And it won't be processed in the usual way through a future council meeting. The planning item is expected to come to the council meeting on the 19th of January and the report will address the petition at that time.
Thank you, CEO. Moving on to 4.5, reports from outside bodies. Councillor Walker, the Copping Refuge Disposal Site Joint Authority?
We had our AGM and things are going fairly well. I decided to not take up time in the AGM talking through the year that was.
Were you re-elected as chair councillor Walker?
The vote for that was the year before.
All right, good, thank you. Councillor Warren for Tas Way South?
I believe that I have already forwarded the quarterly report, but I'd also like to table the annual report for Tas Way South.
Thank you very much. Moving on, Tas Water Corporation Greater Hobart Committee. There's nothing to report on either two of those committees. Reports from council and special committees and other representative bodies. The Audit Panel Chairperson's Report, as listed in the agenda. The Cultural Creative Advisory Committee, as listed in the agenda. Are there any other reports for tabling? Deputy Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. I have the pleasure of tabling the minutes from the Active Living Advisory Committee of 15th September 2025.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Are there any other reports for tabling tonight? Councillor Chong?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I've tabled the Richmond Advisory Committee—
The minutes of the 15th of October.
Thank you very much. Councillor Kennedy?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to table the minutes from the 19th of November for the Bellariff Community Arts Centre meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports for tabling? There being none, we now move into our weekly briefing reports of the 10th, the 17th and the 24th of November of this year, they've been circulated to councillors. Are there any matters arising? Councillor James?
Mr Mayor, I refer to the 17th of November 25 weekly briefing report. And on page 23, applications currently under appeal. On the page 23, it does refer to— preliminary conference was held on the 17th of October regarding 72 Espinard Rose Bay. Revised grounds of appeal have been submitted. Through you, Mr Mayor, is Mr—the chief planner able to provide an update in relation to that?
Thank you councillor James. Mr Ma, please.
Through you, Mayor. Thank you, councillor, for the question. No, I don't have an update on that at the moment. But I'm happy to provide an update through our weekly briefing report as to the progress.
Thank you, Mr Ma. Councillor James, anything else?
Second one, Mr Mayor, is the 24th of November 2025. The Draft South Eastern Tasmania Regional Deer Management Plan and State Government Policy Review. In Mr Graham's report, he refers, amongst other things, that there is an increase in the number of deer in the south-east region councils. Does that include Clarence or is there more so a deer problem outside of Clarence? Mr Graham?
Through you, Mr Mayor. It's Clarence, but also other municipalities as well.
Thank you, Mr Graham.
So it does say there is an increasing number of deer. That seems to refer to, amongst other things, in Clarence. So is there a deer problem in Clarence or is there more so associated with the other councils in the southern region?
Well, I think it's fair to say that all southeast Tasmania is dealing with this at the moment, councillor James. Would that be fair to say, Mr Graham?
That is correct, Mr Mayor.
At a recent Local Government Association meeting, it was clear that it is statewide and hence the NRM South report, the draft report. Any other questions, councillor James? Thank you. Any other— councillor Hunter, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. I have a question around the brief— weekly briefing report dated November 17th in regards to the litter lock trial that's being undertaken at Dunbarton Drive for 10 residents for approximately $1,800 in total. Really, really pleased to see this initiative. And it's something I've been thinking a lot about in my area of Sanford, because this is a major issue and I'm sure it is across lots of areas in the municipality. Just wondering if this will be rolled out to other areas of the municipality if deemed effective as a result of the trial.
Mr Graham?
Through you, Mr— yeah, so it's a trial process. We'll review that and then we'll certainly consider it budget time. I feel it would be worthwhile for council to receive feedback at that time where the council feels the initiative to further roll this out through the community.
Thank you, Mr Graham. Any other colleagues wishing to raise an issue regarding the weekly briefing reports? All right, there being none. I know they're at the end of our omnibus items, can I please have a mover? Thank you councillor Chong, second, and councillor Kennedy. All those in favour? Thank you. All right, moving now on to public question time. 5.1, public questions on notice. Mr Thomas Chick of Mornington has one question, as listed in the agenda. CEO, are you able to provide the answer, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr Chick asks a question in relation to Ask AI. Question reads: Councillors recently implemented an Ask AI feature on their website that uses a large language model to attempt to answer questions submitted to it based on the contents of other pages on the website. What is the ongoing cost to council for the provision of this feature? The answer is, we are currently undertaking a trial of the Ask AI feature on our website. After the trial concludes, if the feature is retained, the estimated cost is likely to be around $250 per month for our level of use. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, CEO. Moving now on to 5.2— sorry, 5.3, answers to previous questions taken on notice. There were two questions from our last meeting, one from Mr Victor Marsh and Mrs Joanne Marsh, both of Billreav. The answers are listed in the agenda. Moving now on to 5.4, which is questions without notice. Are there any questions from the gallery this evening? There being none, we now move on to item six, deputations by members of the public. Are there any deputations, CEO? Thank you, Mayor, no, not tonight. Thank you. All right, moving now on to item number seven, Planning Authority Matters. I advise that council now intends to act as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act of 1993. Moving on to item 7.1, which is a planning application for 161 Howra Road, Howra, secondary residence and outbuilding. There's a recommendation before us. Is there a mover of the recommendation, please? Thank you councillor Hume. Is there a second— councillor Kennedy, thank you. Councillor Hume?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe this is a fairly straightforward application. The key issue that was raised by representatives is around overshadowing. And as there is— while there is some overshadowing of neighbouring private open spaces, it doesn't exceed the— what's regarded as unreasonable and according to the performance criteria and the planning scheme. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hume. Councillor Kennedy? Thank you. Any other colleagues wishing to comment on this item? There being none, there's probably no need for a right of reply, councillor Hume, thank you. I'll put the motion that is a recommendation. All those in favour? That's unanimous, thank you very much, colleagues. Sorry. Oh, beg your pardon, sorry, I'll do that again, I thought I saw you then, so I'll keep my glasses on. All those in favour? All right, thank you. Against? Thank you. That is passed. Thank you very much. Moving now on to, and my apologies councillor James, I see you there, item eight, 8.1. Moving on to 8.2, Asset Management. 8.2.1, which is Coastal Access Strategy 2025 for adoption. Call for a mover, please. Thank you councillor Mulder. Is there a second? Thank you, deputy mayor. Councillor Mulder, please.
Now, thank you, Mr Mayor. This is a fine body of work overseen by some fine people within council. And I can do nothing more but make my usual observation that it is actually a beach access strategy, because there are a number of areas within Clarence where access to the coast is for access to other areas other than sandy ones. And in terms of access to the sandy beaches, I pay particular respect to the—to the work that's now going into providing disability access ramps so that people of all abilities can access our wonderful beaches. And just putting on my Australian Coast of Plymouth hat. Enjoy them while we've got them, guys. But the other issue that I make is that we need to also look at access to areas. And I always mention the one on the Bellariff Bluff, where there's a couple of dinghy dabbits there, where there used to be the old search and rescue dinghy used to swing off there and if there was a ship in distress, they would throw it overboard and row furiously out to the vessel. I don't think it was ever used, but it was there as an emergency thing. But there are a lot of people that go down there now because it's a great spot to be fishing, to be diving, to be swimming. And I even know of people who haven't catched the occasional rock lobster there. But the access to that area is down a very, very steep slope. And you can see it, there's a track parked out there. And the thing that concerns me, and it's not the only area, there are many areas within Clarence where people go and access the rocky foreshore and they have to climb down a steep embankment to do so. And you can see where the tracks are. And it just frightens me that are we one day going to find out, like the Kingborough Council did with the Allan Cliffs, that a coroner says something about it? And we don't really want to be that. And I would really urge that we adopt this strategy and we go forward. But there's another body of work that needs to be done about making safe access to some of the non-beach areas of the city. Having said that, I don't intend to stall this excellent work that's been done so far by, you know, by doing anything other than saying, let's congratulate the people involved in this, particularly our staff. And that we also put on the horizon that we probably need to do some more work in terms of those other areas. So I commend the strategy to council.
Thank you councillor Mulder. Deputy Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. And likewise, I concur. This is a very impressive body of work. And of course, as we know, we've been following this now since the initial phases of consultation began, I think, in sort of from March to May in 2024. And we've had two phases of consultation. It's been workshopped, been, you know, key stakeholders have had the opportunity to provide input into what I think we would all agree is a very comprehensive strategy, which provides the direction for the future management of coastal access, identifies opportunities for better management of our key sites and of course, a guide for what future action should be taken and where. And of course, this is a 10-year strategy, a framework for the future, which will enable council to better plan, advocate and deliver improved and inclusive coastal access in our city. And of course, having 191 kilometres of coastline, a diverse coastline in our city, of course, providing the levels of access that we might want everywhere can be challenging. And councillor Mulder alluded to some of those things and some of the work that may need to happen into the future. But—and it is easy to see why it may be referred to as a beach access strategy, of course, because the feedback that we've received from our community is very heavily focused towards our beaches. And that's understandably so. But of course, this framework is one that's applicable to all the sites across the city moving forward into the future. So I can also do nothing more but to say that this is an excellent piece of work. Congratulate the staff that have put all this together and the community and the stakeholders that have also driven the direction of those focuses. And very pleased to support the motion.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Any other colleagues wishing to speak to this item? There being none, there's probably no need for a right of reply. Thanks councillor Mulder, I'll put the motion, which is the recommendation. All those in favour? That's unanimous, thank you very much, colleagues. Moving now on to 8.2.2, which is the Food Organics Garden, Organics Fogo Curbside Transition. And there's a recommendation there for us. Call for a mover, please, to this motion. Councillor James, second, and councillor Hunter, thank you. Councillor James?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And may I say from the outset, this is a monumental moment in Clarence's moving forward as far as the Food Organics Garden, Organics Fogo Curbside Transition. And by the very nature of this, there's been a lot of work that's been put in by the staff. There's been discussions in conjunction with other councils. Akonulki, for instance, has had its own—I suppose you could say its own questions about opting in and opting out. But that by the very nature is—I think we can presumably overcome any issues down the track if we go ahead as we are proposing in this motion to commence engagement and negotiation with commercial parties and endorse in principle the transition of an existing garden organics go curbside collection service to food— sorry, organics and garden organics Fogo, it's a bit of a tongue twister. But look, it's a great, great process. I would like to thank a number of councillors who've been on this journey over the years. In particular, I'd like to acknowledge councillor Warren, because she has been there at the forefront and leading the charge. There's others, of course, in this council who have done just as much work and presumably have steered this with the staff who have undertaken many avenues of discussion on the mainland and so on and so forth. And it's believed to commence on the 1st of January 2027. I don't think I need to say any more, except to say it's excellent. And it's going to have a few little teething problems. But like anything in this place, over anything that's being new and introduced, I think that's by the very nature of the challenge that is upon us. But I look forward to this really becoming a centrepiece as part of councils moving forward, and I seek council support.
Well, thank you councillor James. Councillor Hunter?
How great is it to finally be able to share this news with the community after so many years? And yes, definitely like to acknowledge councillor Warren for bringing this forward in the last term, I believe. The Sustainability Advisory Committee is very pleased with this moving forward. There's still lots of work to do internally and amongst councillors to resolve how it is rolled out once we have more information and doing some education work for the community about Fogo and how it works. I'd also like to call out Mr Young, the council officer, who's really been forging the way on this project internally. So thank you, Mr Young, and look forward to seeing what happens next.
Thank you councillor Hunter. Any other colleagues wishing to speak to this? Councillor Goohan, thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to extend my gratitude to the staff for taking extra time this week to sit down with councillor Ritchie and myself to discuss the concerns that we have in regards to the implementation and the consultation. And just to be aware that they have taken on board that we'll be consulting with the community to ensure those that currently don't have green waste want the service that Fogo provides, particularly those of us in rural communities that already compost and don't necessarily want to see the additional costs of Fogo when we're utilising our green waste, sorry, our food and organic waste ourselves. So really grateful for council, it provided a lot more clarity, sitting down and going over it with them and understanding that they, you know, were taking our concerns on board. And I really appreciate that and I look forward to the community consultation on this.
Thank you councillor Goohan. Councillor Warren, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you councillor Hunter and James for your kind words. Yeah, this has been on my wish list since I was elected in two thousand and eighteen. And Alderman Luke Edmonds raised it at the beginning of two thousand and nineteen, and then it was put on hold because of what happened in two thousand and twenty. I want to talk about why this is important. Earlier in the meeting, I tabled the annual report for the Tas waste south. And in this report and in that, there's mention of the percentage of general waste that contains food. And it's like fifty percent, or it's a huge amount. So that amount of food waste is currently going into landfill and creating methane gases. Now, in copping, we can actually capture those methane gases and power twelve hundred houses. But if you're composting on your property or elsewhere, it's possible that those methane gases are being released. The other statistics were really interesting about how much recycling is in general waste. And there's a really big piece of education to be done here. And Rethink Waste, the organisation is doing a fabulous job, particularly working with primary school children and getting into the family home that way by teaching children how to separate what goes where and why it's important. So while this hasn't come about as quickly as I would have liked, I'm comfortable that it's coming about in a good way and that we're providing a good service that is modelled on best practice. Even if our interim solution doesn't quite get there, we're working towards a best practice solution. And it's certainly one of the questions that I've been asked most frequently over the last seven years as to when are we going to have Fogo? Or we've got it in Lennoxian, you know, Kingborough, why can't we have it in Clarence? And I've been saying it's coming for a long while now. So it is coming. And I hope I look forward to endorsing this.
Thank you, councillor Warren. Any other colleagues wishing to speak to this? Thank you, councillor Walker, thank you.
Thank you. Well, this has been noted a long time coming. But to be honest, it's better to have taken this approach than to have rapidly gone into that space. Now, had we done that, we'd be able to say, yas, yas, we have Fogo. But would we, had we rushed into this, then we would be probably collecting all the Fogo, compiling it into a big truck, driving it vast distances to facilities that are not in optimal climatic settings for this to occur versus the default situation, which was a best practice landfill, which is covered, capped and tapped for the methane. So a marginal difference at that as opposed to where we're heading with this project, which is best practice, best practice Fogo management. Now, there's been almost dog year evolution in this space. We were looking previously at a specific universal model, which is what Dovilton in the North West have. But moving forward, there are some other models and using different things together that will allow us to get a really optimal result in this. So I'm very comfortable supporting this because there is a tangible benefit, not just a performative benefit from where we're starting. The glide path is prudent. And then the other bit I would make is the next council, perhaps more than this current council, whose term expires in October next year, will have stewardship of how we want to go forward. It is not set in stone that we will do what some councils have done, which is just make general waste fortnightly. That'll be a decision that is monitored and evaluated at the time. And I think this should give the community some comfort, too. So this is a good way forward. Yes, there will probably be some teething issues. But this is a prudent step, and I seek council support.
Thank you, councillor Walker. Any other colleague wishing to make a contribution on this matter? There being none, councillor James? Councillor's support. Thank you, councillor James. I'll put the motion that is a recommendation. All those in favour. That's unanimous. Thank you very much, colleagues. Moving now on to item eight point four point one, the quarterly report. The quarterly report to the thirty of September has been circulated. There's a recommendation that that be received. I'll call for a mover of this motion, please. Thank you, councillor Kennedy. Seconded councillor Chong. Councillor Kennedy. Councillor Chong?
Just to comment on the, as usual, a very well put together, informative and well laid out report, and thank the staff for doing that.
Thank you, councillor Chong. Councillor Walker, do you wish to talk to this matter? Any other colleagues wish to speak to this matter? Councillor Hume, thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Just to pose a question. There's a number of references in the quarterly report to the Clarence housing strategy, proposed housing strategy. And I just wanted to see what the timeframe might be for that.
Thank you. Mr. Ma, please.
Through you, mayor. Thank you, councillor Hume, for the question. We're in the process of writing the brief at the moment. Both my team and Miss Coburn's team involved in that. Given the timing of the year, I think it's probably appropriate to be looking at trying to release that early in the new year for a response to get on to it as fast as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Ma. Councillor James, do you wish to speak to this? Thank you. You have the call, sir.
Yes, look, I endorse the quarterly report and have one question. On page nine, under the Cambridge Primary School redevelopment, it refers to, amongst other things, the redevelopment complements the Oval master plan, upgrades amenity, pedestrian access, and the off-leash dog park. My question is in relation to the demolition of those existing change rooms or that's currently going to be demolished to make way for the gymnasium. Stage two construction is listed here in late two thousand and twenty six. Is there any proposal to provide temporary change rooms in the event that there is going to be a sporting activity ongoing, as construction will obviously be ongoing at the time?
Councillor James? Might defer that to Mr. Graham. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So council officers, DSIP, and the Cambridge Primary School are in regular meetings at the moment on the initial planning phases for the development. We're certainly looking as a part of that as not just only the gym, but the Oval, the change of Cambridge New and a future pavilion, plus also the car parking through there. So as all these concept designs develop, we'll inform council on the future plans on the existing facilities and how they'll be managed as the construction of the gym and et cetera is occurring.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Councillor James?
On a supplementary, yes, I did mention my question as to whether or not there would be some temporary change rooms, et cetera, to be there on site whilst the users of the Oval, as it presumably will be using the Oval during that time. So is it intended to provide temporary change rooms on site during the sporting season at Cambridge Oval?
Mr. Graham, are you able to shed further light, please?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It is highly likely that we'll be providing temporary arrangements as we did at Clarendon Vale Oval for the sporting. But I can't say definitely yet because we like to absolutely plan everything that's happening in that precinct before formally advising the club and council.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Any other questions? Are there any other questions from colleagues on the quarterly report? Councillor Kennedy, write a reply.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, colleagues, for your contributions. And one thing that I'll add to councillor Chong's comments is it's great to see these documents becoming so user friendly. It's really, really positive. So thank you, staff. Thank you all.
I'll put the motion, that is, that the quarterly report to thirty September two thousand and twenty five be received. All those in favour. And that's unanimous. Thank you very much, colleagues. Moving now on to eight point four point two, submissions in response to revised draft development assessment panels bill two thousand and twenty five consultation. Is there a mover of the motion? Thank you, councillor Mulder. Seconded, the deputy mayor. Councillor Mulder, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is actually DAPs three, I believe. DAPs one was managed to be defeated in the legislative council. DAPs two seemed to appear and then disappear around the time of the last election. And now we have DAPs three, which is actually a lot of components of DAP one, but basically abandoned some of the ideas in DAP two. Now, DAP two had this unique thing where we were going to take politics out of planning by giving the power to the minister, a member of parliament. How political can you get? The role that councils used to have, you know, like, really. However, the report is available for all to see. And basically, I think the position of this council is, don't do it. But if you're going to do it, then do it this way. I'd like to make a couple of observations. When someone submits a development application, a subdivision application now, or DA, particularly as it relates to social housing, that the submission is made to the DAP panel. The DAP panel then seeks advice from the community and advice from council acting as a planning authority. So our experts will be doing what they always do, going through the thing. But we will be asked as a planning authority to vote on it without knowing what the people think, or what the issues the people might have with the issue. And it just seems to me that if you're going to go down that path, why not just hand it to the planning experts and let them give their advice? Because whatever we do with that advice around this table, we'd basically be, you know, refer back to the thing. So we're a bit player in this game. And that there's no point in us sitting as a planning authority, reviewing the advice of the panel, of the experts, because the experts' advice is going to go to the panel anyway. So it just seems to me an additional step, which puts us in that awkward position of not knowing what our community think about something, and having to question the advice of the planning experts without any input from the community who we represent. So it just seems to me that's one thing to do. And the other thing that's missing from here is the DAPs will be heavily relying, the DAP panel will be heavily relying on the advice provided by council's planning authority, people who we pay. And suddenly, you know, where are they acting as the planning authority? Why don't they pay for that advice? The same way we do with our health services officers who run around the place checking on food outlets to make sure they meet the health regulations. The state government actually pays council for that function, as I understand it. If they don't, they should. And that should be the case here. If they are seeking advice from Clarence council's planning authorities, then like everyone else, they should pay for that advice. And what will happen if DAP get up is we will be sitting around here left deciding whether or not you can put up a carport in the street, or whether this little dimension goes here. It just makes a mockery of the whole idea of a planning authority which has some strategic control over land use. So, you know, and it just seems to me that what you're doing is you are dispossessing council of its role as a planning authority in the strategic use of land within council, within the council boundaries. If you're going to do that, then just call it in and do it. Don't muck around with it. And don't do this pretense of a planning authority, which is just a front. And we take the public approbrium for the policy decisions of the government. And there can't be any decisions about that, revisions about that. So the whole thing, I seriously think it's a solution running around looking for a problem when there isn't one. Everything's working quite well now. If you listen to, even the property council will come along and say, this will not speed up the process, this will actually slow it down. Because there aren't the timelines that we are faced with.
Thank you. Before I call on the deputy mayor, a second, we might just check her microphone. We had some very enthusiastic grade three and four deputies mayors for Bill Weir Primary School today that were fascinated by the microphones, and were concerned that they weren't on and weren't working. So we might just test to make sure it works.
Testing.
Excellent. All right. Okay, deputy mayor, you have the call. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so here we go again on DAPs. And I find it unfortunate that we are continuing to revisit an issue which I would have hoped the state government had learnt its lesson on, trying to continue to fight a fight that I think, if I recall correctly, all councils united to oppose the previous bill that failed in the parliament. What we see here is simply a tinkering to try and make it appear more palatable, as if the government has listened and somehow this is now much more acceptable in terms of its presentation and its intent. I don't see that that is the case. I think I can do no better than actually read from the conclusion of the report, which says that the proposed revised draft DAP bill two thousand and twenty five provides an alternative application process that is unnecessary, opportunistic, and without justifiable purpose. I don't think you can be any clearer than that as to why this is problematic and why we are taking the position that we are as a council. I totally agree with councillor Mulder. This is far from removing politics from planning. And in fact, I would argue that it does the reverse in the extreme. I've spoken about this in this place any number of times. We've talked about the data. We've talked about the fact that there is no planning problem to address. The things that were being put up previously just didn't exist around timing, appeals, all of those sorts of things. That's not the reality. So disappointing that we continue to have to revisit. But I thank the council officers for continuing to do the hard yards in evaluating the documents that are presented. And I'd also encourage councillors to consider making their own personal submissions as well if they feel so motivated. I certainly will be doing that. And I'm not pleased that it's here, but I'm supportive of the position that council is taking, and I encourage colleagues to support.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Councillor Hume, please.
Thank you, mayor. In previous discussions about the DAP bill and council's submission to previous iterations of that bill, one of the things I said before, and I'm going to say it again, is if you're trying to take the politics out of planning, my challenge to the Tasmanian government, to the planning minister, to the premier, is to name one example of a project that has faced this problem. Yes, projects and development proposals have been subject to politics. Yes, there's been passion from both pro and anti forces. But where is an example of that politics infecting the planning process in a way that planning authorities or tribunals reviewing planning authority decisions have actually made a decision that doesn't have planning merits? Give us one example of the problem that this bill is actually trying to address. And people have challenged them to do that, and they haven't been able to provide an example. Now, when it comes to councillor Mulder was talking about the issue of them drawing on the same planning expertise that the council provides. And one of the problems is if they were going to employ their own planners in Tasmania, there is actually quite a shortage of qualified planners, a lot of competition of qualified planners. And what we don't want is additional planners, you know, adding to that competition, adding to the, you know, diminishing pool that authorities have to draw on. So we already have twenty nine councils competing for expert and qualified planners. And, you know, the competition's intense, and that's not something we want to increase. But the big shame of this proposal... But the big shame of this proposal is that there are plenty of other issues in planning that need to be addressed, genuine issues. And yet this Tasmanian government, while they could have been focusing on those issues, have been pouring their efforts and their energies into this. And I give the example of, I was serving on the Strillas or Southern Tasmanian Regional Land Use Strategy Steering Committee. And one of the frustrations in the steering committee was there were a number of responses, information, data, et cetera, that we needed from various government departments and agencies. It was being coordinated and provided to us by the Department of State Growth. And because of the foot dragging from the Tasmanian government and getting that information to us, because they weren't focused on the Strillas, there were blowouts in the timeline of the project, there were blowouts in the budget of the project. We had to ask for additional money from the Tasmanian government to help fund the project because we didn't want to have to go cap in hand again to the councils who had co-funded the project when it was actually the state government that was causing the delays. So, you know, they really hadn't had their eye on the ball in the development of the Strillas. And when they came back to the steering committee, there were instances where the information was insufficient. So for example, one of the things the steering committee provided was population projections that had come from an expert consultant. We had a response from the department that they don't agree with the population projections. And our response to that was, well, what are your projections and what are they based on? Crickets. So, you know, there are plenty of issues to address in planning. One that I'm often getting on my horse about is the need for greater densification around, and it's great that our council is doing some work around that, around key transport corridors and commercial services. And the need for also a greater diversity, you know, that will create a greater diversity of housing types to suit people at different, you know, different circumstances, different stages of life. We don't have enough apartments and townhouses in our city and in our state. We are half the national average when it comes to the proportion of apartments and townhouses in our dwellings. And yes, a single dwelling with a backyard is very suitable for most people. But, you know, there is a lot more demand for other styles of housing that's just not being met. And that's part of the reason why we have a housing crisis. Yeah, that's a planning issue that the Tasmanian government would be focusing their energies on.
Thank you, councillor Hume. Any other colleagues wishing to speak to this item? Councillor Walker.
Thank you, Mayor. So this must be what, the third time it's come before us? I think that there's some of the responses against some of the specific elements are fairly reasonable. But as with the other previous ones, I don't agree with the tone of our response. And I don't think it's a productive approach. But watch this get through eleven one in this chamber right now.
Any other colleagues wishing to speak to this motion? There being none, I'll call on councillor Mulder for your reply, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of points raised. It's interesting councillor Ritchie points out that Elgat really got serious about DAPs one. And there was a joint approach and it was to the brief to the Lichco and it was well received. And one of the main things, it may be noted now that the timelines for this round of consultation actually prevent Elgat getting together and organising a joint response. I think that was called divide and conquer once upon a time. And the other thing is that the politics out of planning, I was referring to DAPs two, which never got here, but which was actually where the minister was going to be able, in a position to start basically calling in anything with social housing. And that is actually not a feature of this particular DAPs three, that's been taken out. But so to say that this is putting politics in planning isn't quite right because as a result of our submission on the DAP two ones and other councils as well, no doubt, that's actually been withdrawn now. So that comment is a little bit unfair in relation to DAPs three, although it was certainly clear about DAPs one and two. The other thing that councillor Hume raised was the transport corridors and this mantra going out that we need to have increasing density around transport corridors. Can I say that in every other state except Tasmania, that's about off-road transport corridors? Because on-road transport corridors actually increase the congestions in the cities and the transport thing. So we need to take that with a grain of salt when we're talking about increasing densification on transport corridors. Because it's off-road corridors. So with that, I just commend the submission to the eleven of you who are progressive councillors.
Thank you, councillor Mulder. I think we'll just, we'll just let that comment lie.
I know where progressivism comes from.
Yeah, I'd ask you to withdraw that actually councillor Mulder, in fairness, let's conduct ourselves properly.
With the progressively minded councillors.
All right, well, it's good to see that councillor Walker has a sense of humour. Colleagues, thank you all for your contributions. I'll put the motion as a recommendation, all those in favour. Those against? And then so carried, thank you. Moving now on to item ten, sorry, item nine, there are no motions on notice. We move to item ten, which is councillor's question time. Moving down to 10.3, answers to questions without notice previous council meeting as listed in the agenda. 10.4, questions without notice. So are there any questions on the floor starting this evening with the deputy mayor, councillor Ritchie? Thank you, councillor Mulder.
I have two questions, Mr. Mayor. One is we've all received a letter from a constituent in relation to Dorans Road. Dorans, which is, I mean, it's been a bugbear for many, many years. I know of at least two senate presidents, one mayor of Clarence and one Hobart Alderman who have been on Dorans Road, who have all been unsuccessful in having their own road sealed. But Mr. Townes points out that there are serious accidents again on Dorans Road, a particular section, five overturned vehicles, all of which, when a car overturns is a potential casualty. And I'm just wondering whether, and it's only on one small section. And I'm just wondering whether, you know, given that, surely we should be looking at some of our road priorities, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Mulder. Mr. Graham?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, sorry, just chasing up some information on that. Because we've put in for some grant funding on the safer rural roads programme for some work on Dorans Road. And I'll chase up on my offices on the timing of that. Grant programme and then inform council.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Just for point of clarification, actually, there were two Clarence mayors lived on that road. Two Clarence mayors lived on that road at different times, obviously. That's right, thank you. Actually councillor Mulder, just one moment, please. Yes, we do, yeah, Mr. Townes has sent it through, it's in the process. I think several people have submitted that. Councillor Mulder, floor is yours, please.
Mayor, last week there was the 15th Annual Tasmanian Geosciences Forum held at Queenstown. And I'm informed very reliably that one of the issues that was discussed was actually Droofy Point. And the fact that this geosciences survey that was done on the Droofy Point peninsula actually shows that the land, that there is some actual subsidence and landslip on the whole of the Droofy Point peninsula. And that the fact is that the southern slopes of Droofy Point peninsula are progressing, is actually slipping away at the rate at this stage of five centimetres per annum.
Councillor Mulder, I have to ask you for your question, please.
So my question, I mean, my question really is, is are our strategic planners who are doing the Skyline's development plan aware of these factual information? And if not, can they please have a look at the papers?
Thank you, councillor Mulder. Mr. Ma, are you in a position to provide a response, please?
Through you, Mayor. Thank you, councillor Mulder. I might follow up with you to actually get the data that you're quoting. I certainly didn't attend the geosciences forum, but happy to take on board any information you have and pass on to our consultants.
Thank you, Mr. Ma. Councillor Hunter?
Just one question. Just wondering if council has previously considered or assessed beach access in Lindisfarne area? Recently was contacted by some residents wondering that. And I noticed in the coastal access plan, there was nothing north of Bellerive Beach until you get to Otago Bay. So I'm sure there's good reasoning for that, but it'd just be good to get some information if it's been assessed previously and why it's not a go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Graham?
Mr. Mayor, I'll take that one on notice and inform council.
Thank you. Councillor Hume?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two questions. The first one is, what consideration has been given to the use of Bowery Oval or Ninja Stadium after Cricket Tasmania ends their tenancy?
Thank you, councillor Hume.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you for the question, councillor Hume. At this stage, there hasn't been any particular consideration given. We are continuing to work with stadiums Tasmania to understand what their considerations are. And once we have a clear picture of that, we will come back to council to workshop that issue about the future.
Thank you. Councillor Hume, councillor Walker, just control yourself, please.
Yeah, for his answer. I was made aware at the Disability and Access Inclusion Network annual celebration, somebody there approached me and drew my attention to a project that had been done by some TASTAF students producing a brochure called Coleriv Valley Richmond and Eastern Shore Accessible Touring Options. And it was a project that looked at the accessibility of various tourism attractions throughout our city with particular focus on Coleriv Valley and Richmond. And my question is, have council officers been made aware of this brochure? And is there any way that we can, council can use it or benefit from it?
Thank you, councillor Hume. Miss Coburn or Miss Wicks, who'd like this question? Could be a team effort if you'd like.
I'd be taking one of those.
Through you, Mayor. No, I've not been made aware of it, nor is Miss Coburn. But more than happy for you to pass on information and we can take it on for consideration.
Thank you, Miss Wicks, thank you, Miss Coburn, thank you, councillor Hume. Councillor James?
Thank you. The CFO mentioned in her presentation this evening about the upgrade of Pass Road and loan funds of five million as part of that project. Are there options in relation to this where it's more than likely to exceed five million? Either to seek additional loan funds or whether cash reserves can be identified and sourced towards that project?
Thank you, councillor James. I'd just take some advice from the CEO as to who that question or two go to.
Probably to the CFO.
Thank you, Miss Ma.
Through you, Mayor. Yes, both could be considered when the time arises, when we know the full cost of the project.
Thank you, Miss Ma. Councillor James?
Question is in relation to the sale of the former army barracks in Cambridge Road, which was mentioned this evening. Will we be considering, will council be making a consideration in relation to change of use? Or is this going to be handled under the Affordable Housing Convention?
Thank you, councillor James. Mr. Ma, if you could please provide an answer.
Through you, Mayor. Thank you, councillor James, for the question. No, the housing order currently is to change the zoning of the land. They would still need to then make a development application through council and go through public consultation as part of that.
Thank you, Mr. Ma, thank you, councillor James. Councillor Walker?
Take the bait and ask a question about whether a motion was unsuccessful about a certain future use of a building last year. No, I think I'll let it go.
Thank you. Councillor, I think that was referring to Ninja Stadium, but anyway, councillor Goine.
Can I ask this version of questions as well? Because as usual, I've got a hundred of them. Probably my first one is, you've probably seen that Hume is trialling a herbicide free weed management strategy. King Barre already cease spraying in their sensitive areas like playgrounds. In Clarence's Alternative to Glyphosate Review Discussion Document for 2021, it was recommended to seek costings on hand weeding. I would be interested to know if the hand weeding was costed because I'd like to know if it's possibly cheaper than the $90,000 we've allocated for the upcoming budget to sign when we spray probable carcinogens.
Thank you, councillor Goine. Mr. Graham?
Mr. Mayor, I'll take that one on notice so we can give some detailed information to council.
Thank you. Councillor Goine?
I, this is sort of a two-part. Can I just clarify if the subdivision for the quarry in School Road has been approved? And if so, what the head's works charges were on that subdivision approval?
Thank you, councillor Goine. Mr. Ma?
Through you, Mayor. Thank you, councillor Goine, for the question. Yes, that was approved. I think it went to council either early this year or late last year. And there was no headworks charges applied to that development because they were constructing that portion of the road with a turning head.
Thank you, Mr. Ma. Councillor Darko, councillor Warren, councillor Goine. Oh, sorry, councillor Chong, my apologies. I still have School Road in the mind, I'm very sorry. Councillor Chong, my apologies.
That's all right. Just following up on councillor Walker's question from last time about committees. Whilst I appreciate that we're doing a strategic plan review first, there's a lot of disquiet in the working groups and the committees because they don't know where they're going. So my question is, do we have a timeframe for when this is likely to be completed? And we can get to look at the committees and the committee structures?
Thank you, councillor Chong. CEO?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you for the question. I'll take that on notice because I want to have some time to consider a proper answer for that rather than just providing an answer off the cuff tonight.
Councillor Kennedy?
Thank you, Mayor. Following up on a question that I've had from, or a couple of questions actually, no, a question from a couple of residents on boathouses. And it's something I've never actually even considered. But what is our policy on boathouses? And we do have a number of them scattered along our coastlines being used as Airbnbs.
Thank you, councillor Kennedy. Mr. Ma?
Thank you, Mayor. I would actually think that's probably within Mr. Graham's team.
Thank you. That's good, good hand pass. Mr. Graham?
I love that, Dan. Not through Airbnb's as my, so we don't have a, I mean, we know boat sheds are being used for boat storage and other things by people. We don't have a policy on those. Some are leased and licensed on our land and some are related to Crown land. No, we don't have a policy at the moment. And no, I'm not the right person to answer in terms of Airbnb's.
Councillor Kennedy, absolute.
My next question would be, with a boathouse that's on private land, is that available to be used as an Airbnb?
Mr. Ma, your turn.
Through you, Mayor. Sorry, I should have qualified my answer before.
So you got it all the same, Mr. Ma.
Relates to this. Any structure that's wished to be used as a visitor accommodation will require a permit under the planning scheme irrespective of whether it's a boathouse on leased or licensed land or on private property.
Only because it's you, councillor Kennedy.
Regulate that.
Again, through you, Mayor. The regularly, generally council regulates visitor accommodation that it doesn't know about through being advised through the state government. When the state government provide, they're reporting to when they've sought permission through the state government. The trouble is, of course, is if someone's not asking the state government or asking the council to undertake that use, we generally only find out when people lodge complaints and we then do investigation and potential enforcement at that time.
Thank you. Well, colleagues, we now have come to the end of councillor question time. I'll call for a motion to move into closed meeting, move councillor Hume, second and councillor Chong. I'll put the motion, all those in favour. And that's carried unanimously. Thank you. So thank you to those members of the public who have attended in person this evening and those joining us via the live stream. This is our last council meeting for the year. So I take this opportunity to wish you and your loved ones a very safe, but happy Christmas. And look forward to seeing you back here again middle of January. Have a wonderful time and please end the live feed. Thank you.